That turned up to be a pretty good lunch deal today. I thought. I'm down and got some coffee from downstairs. So I have one of their coffee cups too. Hey Scott.
Yeah Mitch, how you doing?
Hey, hey, how you doing?
Good. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, you're a little bit faint, so I don't know if you can turn the volume up, I'll try and do something for my end too.
Alright, yeah, turn it up on your end, I think we're, we're at the sort of limits here of what we, what we have to work with at the moment.
Okay, I, I fixed it a little bit.
Okay. How you doing Dave?
Hey David.
Paper but I can't.
Oh yeah.
She's that's all.
That's our album, look there Jacob.
Oh, yeah, let me grab that.
He knows it's coming, he's prolonged.
I must of course, you know, the fifteen thousand is a door price.
Oh good, they have.
Being a citizen, I don't know.
This isn't the field township, I mean, you know, you are the sheriff of the field township.
There's something.
How's the skiing Mitch?
What's that?
How is the skiing?
The skiing is very good, up until about two o'clock in the afternoon and then it gets skied off and a little icy. But we've had snow for two days and, you know, we go up the mountain and come down the mountain.
Good. Good. Hey Doug.
Hey.
Hello Scott.
Hello Ron, how are you?
Okay, how are you?
I'm well man, I mean. You're lovely white showing. Yeah, just doing well.
Hey Scott, on the Franklin Hill subdivision, I didn't get anything via email for that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know Mitch, I've been in the woods all day.
I'm sorry?
I said I've been hunting all day, I wouldn't know.
Okay, well I, I didn't get anything, so I'm not, I'm not prepared to comment on it.
I, I, I saw some but, you know, nothing, nothing yet and that's alright.
Okay.
Going to my house, I got these two bucks at block corn.
Cool.
Play around.
Maybe during footlock season, after Christmas I come over.
That's my favorite season.
Rhythm is someone's mind.
That's my favorite season of footlock.
I'm surprised that they care.
Footlock, right.
Yeah, that's my favorite.
You're on this or you're on your passo or yeah.
Where do they shoot like a ball?
Yeah.
Yep, rifle patch round ball, fifty-four caliber long life, gorgeous.
You're entitled.
Yeah, I have a gorgeous handmade Isaac Kane style thirty-six inch bearing.
Did you?
Gorgeous.
For me, a guy named.
That's the, uh.
Barry.
Oh, okay.
His last name, but he was a big footlock.
So that's a lot of problems.
He used to go down to Gettysburg and do a reenactment.
Oh yes.
Well, no, you're here for the land development.
See my new?
Land consolidation.
See my new thing?
Cool, look at you. Telling you.
Ah, I don't know, I don't even know how to use it.
Under the land development.
Alright. Now, what's this new thing that Brian sent around?
I, I don't know.
Skyline Drive, a self-storage unit off four forty seven.
That's the, uh, the Capasso one.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, and so that was just a letter from, uh. That was just a letter from, uh, from the Monmouth County Planning Bureau, right? I just briefly, oh, here it is, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Eagle Valley self-storage, you're right.
Mm-hmm.
That's Skyline Dry.
Uh, Skyline, that's the, uh, that's the subdivision that's over there.
Subdivision.
Yeah, there's how it is. There's a flood plain behind the BFW, it's in that. It's within that and behind like three most P tests. That's not Foner, no, not Foner. It's over here.
When you wash, you should start peeling that off. Need to see her.
Oh, I was here. Oh, well, the closest. Skyline Drive's over here, putting the candles here.
It's basically.
Yeah, the subdivision back in there.
It's ba, yeah, it's just American way, one of here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's basically what, there's a. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, American way is where you live.
We know where they want to do this, for the question we have.
Okay.
We wouldn't have a lot of preference on that topic because our gas line.
And, and it involves man.
And water goes from. All going through our property, all the way down to.
Yeah.
We need the community. Yeah, we have our own house.
Right, right, right.
Well, not, uh, they, they talk about two homes. Some effect on lighting, is there anything else? We were not, see originally.
Cause you're up on the rise and that thing is gonna be, is likely.
Hey Bob.
Originally calling the car emergency problem here.
Is it? Right, right.
The other way you talk.
Okay.
I see it's coming out of town, we have some wetlands in our property, we have the only corporation each year came in, it's not wetland.
We've been through this a couple of times already before you were even here though. We went through the wetlands and all the rest of it.
Yeah, they came in there and said, no, you can't.
They're not, they're not in the wetland.
Well, they're adjacent to the flood.
Well, they could be adjacent a couple of ways.
Oh, thank you Bob. I didn't realize you were there till I saw you come, I missed you, I saw all kinds of people there.
Looking shiny in.
In the ballroom.
I saw the, um, I saw Gina, I saw a few people, but I came like fifteen minutes early and I still was waiting them back.
Absolutely, bringing all those extra chairs, that was wonderful.
Yeah, always beautiful.
Am I wrong?
This was the, uh, this was the, this was actually the Trinity Continuum Community Band, this is the, this is the community concert band. I think it was about forty, about forty at this point.
The quartet, the singers are great, I think three of the four of them.
Oh yeah, yeah, we had a, it didn't look like this, cause I took the pictures, hey, my uncle. At least, we do, we were doing Christmas music.
It's all, it's all Christmas, pretty much.
Here, here, here's.
A lot of medley stuff.
Here, here's your, here's the program, let me tell you guys. It was, we hadn't done it in two years, it's terrific. Yep. No, it was wonderful, a lot of fun. I see your daughter got her master's degree, that's wonderful, Dave. Your daughter got her master's degree, that's terrific, good for her.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they do it? Christmas song.
Oh yeah. Sort of. Cannot go wrong playing those songs. Two years, I'll tell you right now, eight weeks ago, we sounded like a group that hadn't played together in two years. Yeah, and, and, you know, it was, it's true though, that's what we sounded like. And then we got back, we kinda got back into, we got back into the swing, I mean, we had some that didn't, and then a few more pulled in. Oh God Greg. Yeah, just among other things, the piano. I turned, I turned around at one point, I thought I was the trumpet behind the, the big man, it's big. I'm all for keeping Greg in the crib, but I didn't. Here we go, we kindly. We gotta, we gotta, somebody ring Greg in please, does it? No, no, we just know it's all, we just all know it's coming.
It's seven oh four.
Oh God, it's, no, no, totally corny jokes, like, I was like, at one point he said, hey, should we get back to play us some music, and someone from the back of the room yelled, please! Are you ready? Why, my thing just turned seven, oh, here we go. We brought in more cheers after that. Alright everybody, let's bring it to order, let's just pledge the flag please. Mitch, right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, so we've got everybody, Ron. All in attendance is everyone. Alright, this is the regular December, uh, meeting of the Smithfield Township Planning Commission. Uh, let's see, first order of business, take a look at minutes from last week, or last month, excuse me. Any changes? Comments?
Second.
Alright, motion from, uh, David Strunk to accept, seconded by Doug Driver. Accept the minutes, all in favor? Aye. Alright, everyone passed unanimously, we are. Next, it's like we have, uh, two items on terms of plans to act on, let's take the first one, I'm gonna take them out of order, we're gonna do Franklin Hill Manor Major Subdivision because this is just an acceptance review. Who's here for them? Okay? Alright. Alright, this is up off, this is on Franklin Hill Road, right?
Month before, uh, intent was to try to get some feedback on the road situation, and to the local road, uh, we've denied. For drainage, stormwater.
Okay.
That time we. Their plans submitted to Conservation District Township.
Okay. Alright, well this is an acceptance review, so there's not actual, hang on. This is an acceptance review only for tonight, and then we'll, it'll move on to the, to the regular stage before we move on with the rest of it, John?
Yeah, everything, everything was in order except the fees related incoming, I got a new.
I think they came, right?
Julia, that they did come last week, so I think it's okay to be accepted and start the clock.
Okay, I was gonna say, to start the clock, Ron, what's the clock on this?
Well, it's the ninety days from.
Tonight, or?
Right, if I just accepted for review. It would be ninety days from tonight, so however that works out, I know we got trouble early in there and stuff.
Yeah, we'll get there. Alright, but it started on the ninety days, review clock is started, I doubt that's any problem, right John?
No, no, it's no problem, yeah.
It's no problem, it's, uh, in the, everything is there so that you guys can do your meaningful review here in normal order?
Yeah.
Think it'll be January, you think it'll be February?
I think it'll be probably.
Not gonna push you if you don't have to.
No, we're not gonna have it the first, fire and commission meeting.
Okay, so most likely it'll be on the February one?
Yeah, because we have the holidays between now and then. But yeah, I think it'll be on the February, you, you should have a review letter well in advance of that meeting.
Yeah, okay. So it's the February twenty twenty-two, oh, twenty twenty-two, Lord, alright, February twenty.
The clock will expire on March nine.
Okay, so we're the second Thursday anyway, so we would have time. To get there. Alright. Now you may.
Pushing them to cut the plans for review.
Alright. Alright, it's been seconded by, uh, by Bob. Any discussion on the acceptance review here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mitch, in favor, yes, no?
Aye, yes.
Okay. Alright, it's accepted for review, the clock is ticking, I'm certain you'll be in touch with Chris A and James and so forth on it, alright? Thank you. Alright, Eagle Valley Self-Storage Unit, let me put this off to the side, and is this all the same? It's Franklin Hill Mayor. Okay.
This one, this is the.
Yeah.
Seems a shame to use up all the paper.
Is it, yeah. Alright, John, what do we have here?
Well, we, uh, provided our first.
Boatload.
Yeah, we provided our first, uh, review letter, um, for a little pre-meeting comment on the length of the letter and, uh, I have two things to say, one, I think as you know, we put the ordinance section, uh, right in the letter for the ease of anybody reviewing it, so that they know what's, what we're referring to, and they understand the language, so that tends to, uh, length of the letter, so I just want to give one. Because I didn't think there was anything in here that couldn't be over. And other than that, I think, I mean, Nate just got this, I don't know how much he wants to go through it, but I do think it's if you wanted to discuss some waivers.
Yeah, I don't know if you, if you'd like to maybe go through the waiver request, uh, John, the major recommendations on waiver requests, uh, sometimes it's helpful to go through those. We're asking for approval, the plan tonight is to be cabled, but sometimes it's good to get the waiver request out of the way, get your recommendations on that. And then maybe there are some things that are coordination issues with the township and just.
Where are the waiver of what? What number? I wanna see which.
I made a.
A separate list?
Yeah, yeah, so these are, these are, you know, maybe you can pass them around.
That's on look for eleven sixty-one, okay, there we go, they have the comments.
Probably yours though, Monroe County Planning Commission, uh, too, did you get that?
I don't think I did see that.
Is that it? You should see it.
There's a thing in there that they have.
Um, I don't actually know, there you go, you can have my gosh.
Oh, it's Mitch's, it's his, no wonder.
Maybe we'll, we'll go through this and incorporate this in our response, I mean, I'd be glad to go over tonight if you want, I'd rather go over John's comment. We'll go over John's if there's anything.
Yeah, I'll be overlapping, okay.
There's another copy, if you wanna give us this. I already have one, so. So, uh, if I could just read you through the letter and not go through every comment, but, um, uh, one, there's a couple of comments on coordination with the fire team, so that's. Township coordinate that, or does it have to coordinate? Recommendation on that.
I'm not really sure.
I actually don't know.
Yeah, my guess is I would probably call Julia, the, the office manager, ask Julia what. My, my guess is she's probably gonna say, contact the chief directly, but let's do what she has, cause that's okay with me.
Probably do that, um, we have some landscape kind of questions and inputs, uh, one of the comments is that there is a four-foot landscape strip required along all non-street foot, uh, property lines. Done a, uh, pretty job of putting creating in there against the residential. That's gonna, uh, cover that off, the other street sides, this is the BFW over here, this is obviously all, uh, flood plain down here, and then this is up against the Eagle Valley. Uh, the word it does allow that you can just use grass as a four-foot strip, and we can label that, sure, they can't be over thirty-two inches high. Have a low, a low landscaping, and we're just gonna propose to use grass, and so they're out there, uh, so again, not, not here against residential, but against BFW, and again. Top of the tier, for the landscape strip we have it, we can show it, but it's, it's really graded slopes. No mix, which is far, and there's that, more like a little wild field area. Fact that it's less than thirty-two inches, uh, you know, I'm kinda thinking it's, uh, you don't have to, you know, that's what we're gonna put back in our next response. So these are, these are mostly graded side slopes along these, along these property lines, or, like that, we're just hoping to put, uh, meadow grass, just like a wild grass. That's recommended by the Conservation District, or. Not, not on that side, right? BFW over here.
Yeah.
Go through this, we're just gonna leave that all go, that could let it be missed, on the accident here in the shopping center, or making property behind it. I'm just thinking about the, the residences on that, on that. Residential system, we have a good bumper in there.
Yeah, but we have a, I live in that community, and we had a lot of problems with, uh, boom, right there, towards like crazy. That was, when you're talking at the end there, where you only put in a letter about two homes, that's gonna affect, it's gonna affect a lot more than two homes. With lighting and everything else, it's gonna.
Do we join any homes, so two homes, two lots to join the property.
Yeah, but there's still, it says within a thousand feet, okay, within a thousand feet, we got a hundred and one homes in there. Okay, now, my question is, moving off the subject here, how are you allowed to put a road there when we weren't allowed to do anything, and that, that because that's where. A gas line goes through, a line goes through, uh, and a water line goes through, the whole thing.
And that's, they're actually off the property, they're on the, on the south side of the property.
That was supposed to be our emergency road, you know. Got down.
Gas and all those are on the adjacent property, I think you're thinking about the strip in here, that's not part of the property.
Why wasn't the community having notified that this was gonna happen? They're, they're already contacting their lawyer. Bruce, lighting in there is gonna affect those homes, whether you put it or not, downside, whatever, are gonna affect those homes.
Most of these, these units, the lighting, the doors will be on the sides like this, they will have lights, reaching downward on the outside of the building, really, uh, you know, on the outside, so there's very.
See, you can have these.
That's one down there? Yeah, yeah.
Well, also I saw you in there that you're talking about fire hydrants, that belong from my community. Hate for that to put, if you put it, repaint, maintain it, at Broadhead Creek. There are more pump stations. Yep, that one doesn't have to do with the other one down there, that one has nothing to do with, the one on that side. Yep.
What's the problem with it Bruce? It's not on their map.
The homeowners would never talk about this, know nothing about it, they're saying there's too many names to put in there, the only name too.
The, 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 the. On the plan, and we were asking for a waiver to. On the overall plan, to identify the, the homeowners who are immediately adjacent to the property, and not go a thousand feet.
Those homes are very close to each other. That originally supposed to be maybe thirty homes in there at one time, FM TV, and then they all of a sudden changed to all of a hundred and one homes. Hey, put your radio a little too loud, I'm hearing it, that's how close our homes are. Lighting, we all talked about lighting at the cigarette store and all. Homeowners there, they got kids. They worried about the lighting, they, they didn't hear about this at all, we saw some sticks and all, and they only heard it about it from here. I don't think that's right, that you don't talk to the community that's right there, and just a lot of taxes to this, to the township.
We, we were here for condition, you know, we've been, we've been before the township for over a year now, so it's just been out there, but we'll, you know, we'll send notices out for these wanting property owners that's required.
Have you talked to them?
Did they tell me you haven't? Have not talked.
Right, we have, but we're here, maybe there's something to. Be. A little taller here.
Well, I, I think we, the latter's objection that I'm hearing so far is that.
Lighting.
Well, that they don't know, one, they haven't been notified, and two, the lighting, we haven't got into the lighting yet. The lighting, uh, I'm just gonna offer two things, I mean, it's, the burden is on you of course to, to make the case, but I'm gonna offer that lighting will be downlighting, uh, and for self-storage, I'm not sure how much lighting they're even going to be providing, it's certainly not like a, uh, a commercial, a car dealership or a commercial establishment where you have to light it for pedestrians coming and going all the time. Uh, one of the requirements that we require in the process is a lighting plan.
Yes.
Which will review any spillover that goes over to the adjacent property, and the ordinance is very clear that that is a minimal amount of spillover, so that's our obligation to make sure that when they present that, that it does impact. To the ordinance, uh, and that should protect well within the law. Beyond to what Mr. Capasso has said, these larger trees, I mean, I, I don't remember what you spec'd there, but obviously evergreen trees provide year-round protection as opposed to deciduous trees.
Have a mix of trees, they are.
They are.
Evergrain.
Evergreens on here and some deciduous. I think the other thing that's important is you think, you know, when you look at, uh, self-storage, in the unit, the light is mounted on the side of the building, the buildings are only. Not gonna have like these typical parking lights that are thirty feet up in the air trying to throw light out over a long area, they have a, a higher light down here, like up the edge.
A lot of them, they tell you you're gonna have a security problem there, cause we have an issue, all the people that walk through our property, through that property, look for cars, not a community next to us. Was it, you know that bucket you were talking about that was built up? By our pump station?
Yes.
That wasn't a problem, we did that, tried to deter people, this property's gonna be fenced.
It's not open.
With the gate. Help people, it'll probably help you as well, help people cut. Help people, that'll probably help you as well, help people cut it.
I really feel bad that your community didn't know about this, but we've been going through this for at least a year, but we don't have a community doing...
Sorry, no, we have a board, we have authorities, we have everything. Not one person has heard about this. And, and, and my president of the board just said, "I saw some walkers, wondering what they were doing there."
Trying to have the least amount of impact on the community, not put apartments or anything with this tight volume, with the traffic, so you, one car now. That, that's what our neighbors are telling us, and try and have the least amount of impact on your community and, and this side. Whatever I can do to accommodate trees, position the lights, it would be a good neighbor.
I understand, that was, uh...
Bruce, the request is only a waiver request, we don't have to grant it.
Right, of course, it's, uh...
But naming and placement on the document itself, there's not a requirement to notify, this is a notification to...
There, there is a notification which we'll do, there's a notification for the immediately adjoining property.
The ones that are joining get notified when they're, when they're...
That, that will be done. This is just to put the names on, you know, to put names, you know, names, individual names on people, you know, a thousand feet away, or...
Development plan.
If, was that...
On the design...
On the plan, right.
Just wanna make sure.
If you feel that's important, we can do that.
It's not requesting not to notify them, it's requesting not to put it on the plan.
We, we notify all the immediately adjoining properties required, uh, for this just... I don't know what, I was just gonna go through the, hit the highlights of the, the questions we had in the review letter and hit these, uh, waiver requests as they came up, and, uh, we can discuss those, um... That's, we are at the number eleven here, is the, is the request not to show all of the individual property owners within a thousand feet. If that's helpful, if we can do that, uh, if we have a, a special plan, do that.
Why would we want it?
I guess that's the question for this. I think this project has an impact...
I mean, it's actually in the ordinance for reasons, I'm just wondering...
Right, I, I think depending, every, every project's different, but you could have a project that would impact people a thousand feet away, if you had a high traffic volume, how do you get through? Maybe three or four ways, and it would impact different people with traffic funneling through, or some kind of bigger...
You know, if you were doing a car dealership where you had lights way up in the air...
Mm-hmm.
I don't see what benefit it does with it.
Even if it's just lifting on the plan, I, I don't understand why.
Yeah, well, I understand the logic, you know?
I understand the logic in a different type of a project, I do understand the logic.
Okay.
All right, I guess, you know, we'd like to get these, and if it's your recommendation, that, that prove the waiver, we appreciate that, if not, let us know that we need to, you know, go back and make this the next submission, so, you wanna kind of do all these one at a time, or...
No, let's go through them all, then we'll take them one at a time.
All right.
Take them after that, excuse me.
So, just go back to the letter.
Stormwater number sixty-one, is that what you gave us?
No, there's another one before, yeah, I missed, I missed the number on one there, I was gonna kind of look that up, um, uh, let me ask, uh, just another one, comment sixteen to go in the order of things. We are proposing to give an easement for all of the, say, your comments, and it all kind of comes together. So, other than the area that we're developing, and I think you wouldn't want our stormwater basins, and if there's a better request to have, an easement over these floodplain areas and wetland areas, all this area that we're not developing, all the way down here and throughout, uh, because it could be beneficial to the township for stormwater management purposes, including the M.S.C.O.R. program. We've talked about that before, and, you know, we're willing to offer that, uh, within it, there's weapons, so this comment is that all, uh, ones have to have meets and bounds on them.
Yeah.
Have been surveyed, uh, but in this case, if we're giving an easement that restricts development and offers the township, you know, we can provide a cash file that has all details in it, so, a lot of, it's a lot of meets and bounds to go through, we could, for this, if that's an option, but in this case, because we're actually giving them, uh, the township to use, uh, through easement, that's something that, that you can want to...
I, I, I think the purpose of the meets and bounds is, one, wetlands will creep sometimes, uh, and/or in the future, sometimes developments creep, probably won't, but sometimes developments creep, uh, homeowners, oh no, homeowners tend to extend their lawns and everything else, so the reason for the meets and bounds is so that ten years down the road, if there's a question as to where the wetlands were, the time plan was approved, that can be reestablished without question. Having said that, uh, I think we could agree to coordinates on the meets and bounds, uh, it, it doesn't have to be the strict meets and bounds, but we need something that we can reproduce those lines ten years from now.
Okay, I think coordinates are probably, you number the points and get the coordinates and same thing.
ETS.
Right.
Yeah, but we have to have the coordinates.
We, we, we put them right on the plan and, you know, because otherwise, you're, you're trying to label meets and bounds and always, you know, follow these longer lines, so I think that would meet the intent and, uh, of the ordinance that way.
Does it have to, does it have to be of the edge of where they're developing and everything to the left they don't worry about?
Yeah, I, I would just say that would be another concession that we could offer is to the new, just, just wherever it's adjacent to proposed development, we need those points identified with coordinates, I would, I would be satisfied with that.
So, this close side, this where the road is coming up, and they, they kind of wrap around this, but you do that close side.
The lawyer in me does not like that. Could tell you right now, the lawyer in me does not like easements that aren't otherwise delineated in some fashion.
The easement will be fully delineated, will include more than the wetland. Wetland will be identified with an easement.
Yeah, but you have to have, you have to have what it is that it's covering, need a descri, a land description.
All right, and we'll, and we'll give you that, so the, the wetland values will be defined, and then there'll be an easement which will be more bigger than the wetland, which will define the township easement, and it'll be by meets and bounds. There are two things, the, the wetlands are within...
Let me jump in here for a second, in trying to give property away a easement, that's really...
I know, Vince.
Trying not to have to do, and too much more money associated away.
Well, you bought it, so here we are.
But I'm giving you, actually, but the, the...
Vince, you bought it.
Problem is, Vince, you don't, even you don't know what you're giving, if it's defined.
That's right, and I could tell you, and I could tell you, having had more than enough easement fights in my, in, in my career, where roads and things move and wander, if, if you have a starting spot with a, with a, with the meets and bounds part of it, you, uh, have a much shorter argument down the road, so the...
There will be a...
So, I don't actually, I, if it says put in meets and bounds, I want all the meets and bounds, period.
I think so.
No, but it's not recorded that way. Ordinance don't get recorded in the same fashion.
Considering the amount of work... Well, just, we're not, you're not gonna record an easement on the wet, that's just a mapping requirement, right?
Uh, easements are recorded.
Will be, and will, will be recorded, I mean, a surveyor, how much, tied into the boundary, you can...
I'm talking about county land record, I'd say, I'm not talking about surveyor going back, Nate.
What I'm saying is, we include not only the wetlands, but other areas floodplain in here that would go to the township, according to the bounds description. Wetlands which are not required to have an easement over them, have a identify, identified on the plan, and the coordinate system which could be reproduced and actually, or more easily reproduced, uh, yeah, with coordinates, then it will meet the...
We're gonna do two things here, trying to prevent the creeks' loss of the wetlands in the easement that is being given to, or offered for, by the township. Easement, I would agree, should be described in its entirety by meets and bounds. Same with, in the middle of that, there are some wetlands that we don't wanna see creep, or if they do creep, we wanna know how much, so we can, we're, we're gonna pin those down by coordinates.
Difference there is, if, if I have a coordinate and I go up to GPS, I can walk out to that point and say, "Here's the wet," if I have a meets and bounds description, have to convert that into coordinates and actually survey it. So, it, it is the appropriate end... I don't know, that, that, for the easement, is it gonna meet some bounds?
Yeah, I'm more concerned when you walk into the recorder of deeds office and you pull the easement, catch this tax ident, ID number, that's where I'm at.
And the easement will be clearly in the...
Just a weapon.
That, that needs to have meets and bounds, I agree with you.
Yeah, that has to be.
Right.
So, we're all speaking the same language?
Well, actually, we're not, I'm thinking, I think the wetland should be also, it's supposed to be, no, we're not speaking the same language. I think it should be both, but I am one, I'm one vote, but I, I'm telling you right now, I'm one vote, but if, ten years from now, twenty years from now, and we're all worm food, and they're gonna fight over whether or not that's, that Sambo Creek shifted in fifteen different floods, 'cause we had another twenty inches of rain over two months, tell you right now, somebody's gonna start their search at the recorder deeds office, and we're gonna go from there, and they're not gonna come back to the township and find out where it has been held, we couldn't find a PRD for twenty-five years that we found in the flood.
But it'll be on the recording plan, I mean, so we put, you know, all this information will be on the recorded plan.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm one, I'm, I'm merely one vote, but I'm just telling you, I don't...
All right, well, go ahead. Uh, let's see here, um... Let's think, uh, we do, uh, offense, uh, we do have some landscaping, let's talk landscaping in general, um, you, you, your ordinance has landscaping requirements around the extension base. Um, this case, uh, for instance, this base, you put the landscaping on the backside because the base is in a self-storage unit, need to get snow, this is where the snow goes. That goes, uh, the plant is around the trees here, you have no way to get that in without self-storage, your landscaping, and we just don't think that a, a smaller basin needs to be screened from a self-storage, I mean, it's actually, areas, again, planted in meadow grass, they're gonna look like a field, uh, or not load on a regular basis, just to keep people out, and our thought is that, happy to put some landscaping in against the adjoining, but it just doesn't make sense within the project, extremely...
Within the fence area?
That goes around the outside.
Because one of the other reasons they have landscaping around is to keep people from indoor...
It's also required to be fenced.
Right.
Fenced around the outside. But, plants all the way around.
No, you would normally plant plants all the way around if it was just, if it was gonna be accepting a large amount, you know, from the side of the hill or something, so it could percolate down, that's not what you have there.
Is, are the plantings around the perimeter to stabilize the soil?
I think it's more, it's more of a screening.
It's more of a screening.
You know, and if it was in a residential development, and you're trying to blend it in, it'd be different. And I think we're, we're gonna refine this as well, uh, there were some shrubs required, and, and we ended up putting those over there just to get them, to try to make it fit, but they really don't do anything over on that side, uh, we do have some trees shown here, I would say probably makes the most sense, so we have, as you come in, so this is the bottom half of the driveway, this is where you come in from. Drive in, a couple of water quality basins right along the road, you just take the road water in and let that clean that up before it gets to the creek. Go on, come in, so a long, this green area, again, it's a couple feet deep, meadow grass, they just blend right in.
Mm-hmm.
That's around these big river basins, I would suggest you just take maybe a couple of these deciduous trees and just plant them down the highway, I think, again, you're not trying to really screen these off, it's gonna look like a field, the kind of field is the trees and the stream, and back and...
That's behind the, the, uh, the primo's pizza, right?
This is, right here is where you come to the end, that's, uh, the gate, where you get in is right here.
Right, so your, your only thing you're screening it from, if you were to plant, is the back of that other strip store?
Right, I mean, we're, I think we should be screening, straightening them off, because, you know, this is the backside of the loading docks and the dumpsters and all that, there, you come back here, there's a string of driveways here, and then the basins are here, so if you ask, and, and more, we may ask for some flexibility if you're generally in agreement as to the way these basins are, I don't really need to scrape it off. We'll refine that, but I just kinda wanna throw it out there, if anyone's absolutely opposed to that...
Yeah, it's understandable.
Actually, for management, we would give a township to look at, at basins, we talked about the, at least specifically with the township though, for their own stormwater quality, to meet how that's for. So, we may ask for a, a waiver on a one percent slope swell, which we think is, or two percent, uh, in order to keep it well. It's located right along here, a swell that picks up this water, gets to the basin, probably ingrained in the pavement, so that, about one percent, so it kinda works well. Also, the flooding elevation in the basin, and then, it picks up this amount of water, it really kinda works as a water quality swell.
Yeah, so that is not gonna hurt anything.
Right. So, in this fact, this, I'll have to find these, so one of the, one of the waivers we're looking for, the utmost limit of cuts, it's supposed to be a minimum of ten feet from property lines, uh, we do have grading that will go against the VFW, um, they're basically down this color slope from the fences, and along this side as well, uh, it's had a property line adjustment, we're giving up some of our property that's overlapped there, uh, we're agreeing to, it overlap unless the VFW had it, that's where their property line shows is in the field, so we'll have an agreement, PRD shows we have five more feet there, whatever the, the spending route is showing. We've, you know, surveyed in from on-road and surveyed in from over-road, and we're the last guy in the middle, so we get kinda went to that, so...
Yeah, you get the, yeah.
So, we will adjust that, but that, that is one waiver request we have, grading, allowing these gradings to the way up to the property lines. I think our stormwater, and, water doesn't go over the edge, it's coming down, and you collected it.
That, that would be the concern, you're not dumping water...
Yeah, you're not pushing it out.
On to the property owner as a result of your grading.
Correct, you collected, and each, each driveway, and down, collect the water, I guess it is.
That basin's enough, I guess probably is, right?
We have this station, this station...
Oh, there's two of them, alright.
This is wetland, right?
Yeah, there, and then behind is a swamp anyway, so, alright.
And here, we're in a new detention zone, so the only, the only real detention we're doing is kind of a water quality for small storms.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's that theory that when you're in the, you know, close to the creek, and the bottom of the watershed, you want your water to get out and not be held back, going for water from the upper edge of the water.
Yeah, that's interesting.
But you can safely convey it to the stream, which we can, because we're right on the stream, really only to do the small storms, and we talked about that, as you've done, some of the comments were about conveying the hydrostorm in the basin, although we have emergency spillways that can handle the hydrostorm, not designed to manage the hydrostorm, so it's a little bit of a different, uh, okay, yeah, we can do this stuff, um... So, uh, sixty-one is about, uh, in this zone, there is a requirement to reduce the post two-year storm flow rate back to the one-year storm, and that's, uh, kind of a water quality, uh, requirement. We need to get an NTS permit, this is not a requirement of the NTS permit, uh, we just have some bypass areas that we can't collect, adequately cut these areas back, we can meet pre versus post-development, and, you know, we have fairly big basins that we're doing for water quality, which is really the only goal here, get this run off these basins, put it into these vegetated basins, and allow it to infiltrate in and settle out, uh, it's not really a control rate, so, that's what that sixty-one is related to, and I think that's one that John recommended that.
I think we're okay with that, and that's also down a small portion of your driveway, too, I think with that.
Correct, correct, yeah, here, we kinda run out of room, we have a, uh, you know, right up against the wetlands here, so we're trying to, to do a very minimal impact without getting in the wetlands, and then we bring these, these, basically, this is just shallow areas for the water to run off the road and infiltrate in the ground or just have anything settle out.
And, and again, it's not running onto...
It's not running into anybody else's.
On somebody else's property.
That's really it, that's really the main point is, 'cause it all flows down to the stream running rate, that, that's...
Right, so, that's why I didn't object to the way that we're discussing it all.
All right, uh, seventy-one is also a stormwater, um, waiver, um, yeah, we're not getting the hundred... Uh, seventy-one is also a stormwater, um, waiver, um, that we're not getting the hundred-year storm here. We're just, we're allowing the hundred, if we do get a hundred-year storm, we want it to be able to get out of the basin without causing erosion, but we're not managing the hundred-year storm because we are in that, in that floodplain, so.
Was there any erosion from, uh, August and September? I'm curious. Did you notice any?
I, it's not easy to see the creature here, you, you-
No, no, I know, I know where it is, yeah.
I have not noticed any in there. And this, you know, when you look at the floodplain here, uh, this gets all backed up as it basically becomes a big lake. So although it's floodplain, it's ponded water, it's flooded water.
Yeah, it's ponded water, I was just curious, because that's about as bad as we've seen in quite some time.
I think, I think this goes through this area pretty slowly when it does flood.
Yeah, okay.
Um, near wetland buffer, uh, we do, um, have very minimal impacts, the wetland buffer, um, are crossing. And down, uh, through, what we have is we have pipes to discharge here, uh, from the adjoining property, and they're actually down low. But it's kinda, and the wetland is higher than the discharge from those pipes. We're proposing an arch cover there to kinda just present what's happening, let the water, it comes out the pipes now, it raises up, and it flows out of the wetland. And we're proposing to put an arch cover there to allow it to continue to do just what it does there now. And that has to be in the inner buffer, and very small impact, and you're closing the buffer to the wetland, that-
How does that work? It's gonna rise up, is it gonna back up in the pipe, back all the way up to the other property?
Or it, it does it now to a certain point, and then it, then it goes up, you know, to model the depth, you know, the way it is. But that's the way it is now, the pipes come in, and the wetland is higher, and it, it ponds in an area, and then it goes up, you know.
It backs up in the pipe to wherever the catch bases are?
Yeah. But, you know, kinda, those pipes were installed below the wetland, it's just always, always been that way since they built it, and it was really not a way for us to fix it, other than to not impact it.
And that's the question, I mean, I know the answer, but proposing does not make that situation any worse.
Where it comes across the road into that, uh, drainage station, are you gonna like dig a hole there, so there's a place for that to pond, or?
Kind of a hole there.
Because eventually you want it to just go seep into the ground, right? Because whatever's left isn't gonna go over the-
So they've kinda dug, they put their pipes out, they kinda dug a hole, and, you know, over time it fills in, so, um, it's kinda off our property. So we're just, again, acting up on our property and try to make-
So the hole's not on your property?
Hole is, there might be part of the hole is on our property, pipe ends are on their property, and we'll build this arch over the top of it to allow the hole to be there, and it's just-
So that arch is over the pipe, so you can drive over it?
Big arch pipe, so their pipes will end, property lines, so their pipes run here and a hole, and then we're building an arch so that we'll have a bottom in it, where it can flow through under the wetland, like it's, there's a little bit of a-
Sort of jumping over the whole problem.
Yeah, I don't know what other choice we have, because, uh, you have to drain, you have to-
Gravity is pesky.
You'd have to dig all the way out through the wetlands to get a few drains.
Water will flow, water will come out. Where it wants to, that's right.
Uh, we do have some minimum, uh, outer wetland buffer, these, uh, storm basins primarily are in the outer wetland buffer. They're kinda their water quality features, take water off the pavement, uh, put it back in the grass, and so that's a, these are appropriate. And the outer stream buffer, there's a, a development, like, point oh-two acres of the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot out of the stream buffer. Very minimal, so we tried to minimize all our impacts within the buffers, almost totally avoided them, but we do have outer wetland buffer. Buffer here, for instance. Person, they're allowed to do certain percentages of that, we have a totally response impact on the wetland buffer. There's a couple waivers that were put together, and if you prefer to just have us come all back with the waivers next year, we can do that. Um, so it's a couple, uh, comments in John's letter, so these were waivers we knew we needed, we submitted the requests.
Which one, which number do you have, John?
The one that we have, uh, these are others that we can talk about. Item number fifty, um, is five feet, this is related, the end of this one should be a minimum of five feet from the property line, that's related to the ten foot, that's another requirement.
Is this in your letter?
Sorry, no.
Yeah, I know.
Number fifty, number fifty and John's.
Oh, yeah, we would, yeah, I was just thinking.
Yeah, sorry, this is one that we had, uh, we did the ten foot, but there's also another requirement, says the so, uh, proposed limit of grading should be a course of five feet. We do have that condition, uh, in a high area here against the VFW and an area against the coffee center. Uh, again, we're collecting the stormwater there, and applying it down on these, like, properties.
Nate, excuse me, you're, you're talking about how close you're getting to the property line.
Right.
It looks like there's pavement pretty close to that property line against the VFW. What's your setback? Are you meeting your setback requirements?
Not a pavement setback requirement, the building setback is like right here, it's a little bit beyond the building setback, and then, uh, south, oh, Steve. Um, that is graded, so it's, the slope is in the grade area, definitely grass, it's opening up, obviously, the slope's down. Down to the other top.
So you're higher than the adjoining property?
So we're higher, yeah. So, if you know this property now, this is just a big pile of stone, a small pile up in here, the leftover construction that we're doing.
That was Peter Armets' property. He used to do, uh, excavating, all of it, all of it was all from him.
He constructed this property, didn't he? I understand that.
No, he started it, he felt, felt through. Supposedly came from the neighborhood where you live. He owned that property.
Right.
And he, he was the original developer, that, it cost it on the bank.
So there's a, there's a large pile of stone here that needs to be graded out. Two-one slopes will-
What does that, what does that mean?
Horizontal to one vertical, so it's a-
They're steeper.
It's not a normal slope, but again, we're proposing this meadow grass type cover that is, is not tending to mow these areas. They're just gonna be filed, heated, operation district.
I understand, warm season grasses and such.
That's why it's required that they put like a meadow grass or something on.
Yeah, something with, so once it's established, okay.
And we would need madding, so those areas would have a, a roof control to get the grass started.
You want a root mesh to-
Really change from then to property to, uh- Right here, um, about four foot, five, uh, uh-
Residential slide.
Residential slide, um, that is pretty close to degraded, or to, there's kind of a pile.
Couple feet, probably.
Right. So leveling out this site, keeping it a moment floodplain.
That was- Other than, and again, just for everyone's purpose, to make sure we all understand, other than the blending into the existing property at the property line, same grading of the site, where all the impervious surface is gonna be, and the units. That is graded so that the water flows away from the residences and-
To the district.
Correct, so the water that falls here, comes down here and goes to the base, and the water that falls here comes down between here. All the inlets, created out of the drives, or just in the middle with inlets every so often.
Oh, okay.
Too much, there's pipes in here, too, it's gonna get too much flow going down that area. But down this way, this goes down this way, this one comes off here, and that's why that swell is there to pick up that water, so yes, for all that water getting into our basin, not putting on the adjoining properties. That is one waiver, uh, we, I did not mention, is that there's a requirement that you can't put your roof drains directly into a storm sewer. Your residential house, that makes a lot of sense, if you're across the lawn, and, and pick up the water. In this case, though, because of how dense this is, all of this area, we really need to put these roof drains directly in the storm sewer, and that's why we have these basins down here, then, to, it's roof water, so it's relatively clean, it's not, it's not-
Yeah, but there'll always be a little something, you know, stuff in the ground.
But it's just, we can't, if we were to discharge these roof drains on the pavement, as the snow melts, you get ice, and that's what we're doing at the top. That's the, that's requiring a stormwater, it makes sense in a lot of areas, but not for this type of project.
Of course, if you have water dumping on the pavement, it's gonna, you get potential to freeze it.
Yeah, that's what we were just saying, the guy-
Drift tonight, and then you really have a house, so, you know, that's, that is something that will, like, make up for that, we have these basins.
But if you didn't do that, it would still go into the storm anyway, because you have all those catch bases there. If you let it dump on grave-
If we dumped it here, it's still gonna go in.
It's still gonna be a way to the storm.
Exactly, it's actually, it's actually probably better to do it, and, and as we said, normal situation before, it's a free, so.
It comes off the side of the road anyway.
So, uh, what's your preference? We can just take your input tonight and put, we have recommendations of some of these waivers, not all. We can put that in our exhibition and try to get maybe-
I think we should do them all at once.
John's recommendation on, on those.
I, I think frankly, we should do them all at once with a, with a, with a waiver, with a waiver list. And I was thinking here, with my, with, with, with my primary objection, as a way to sort of skin the cat, Ron, what would you think if, or the easement, um, easement issue that, that the meets and bounds problem with, you know, your easement, meets and bounds description, your overall one that you have to do anyway.
Right.
There's nothing that says that you can't put in the, in the middle of your description, or your easement description, that there, that there are also wetlands delineated at, whatever you call them, your GPS coordinates. At the following, at the following coordinates, put it within as part of a, you know, basically as an additional paragraph, as a, as a, as a D description. I mean, there's nothing that ma- there's nothing set in stone as to what makes a D description magical, just has to describe what's, what is happening on the ground. And I feel better if you did it probably that way.
What is envisioned, just having it on the plan, doesn't talk about it even a little bit, I don't think, right, it just says they shall be identified on the plan.
Just that they should be identified, but I understand what Scott's asking, and you can say, you know, at, at the end of all these, it says, together with all the buildings and structures, blah, 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 well, you could have a paragraph right about there that says the easement incorporates a wetland with coordinates, uh-
That a delineator already, coordinates, whatever, and then I think, that's gonna, because this plan's gonna have to be recorded anyway.
Correct, yeah, so we, we put the chart, we put the chart on the plan.
Yeah, I, I, I think that will be, I think that would be better for, again, for the, for the flight twenty years down the road that may eventually happen. Send you the buildings.
So that follows the approved plan, then?
Yes.
We have a reference, so-
Into perpetuity.
My thought is that the easement, it will actually go with the lock consolidation plan, so we have a lock consolidation plan, and we're four parcels joining us together. My thought is that on the lock consolidation plan, we'll probably just table that, we'll put the easement right on that, that's recorded.
Yeah, I, but I think you can do, I think you could do it that way, the way I was just thinking about it, as a way to-
Awesome, if, if they're gonna transfer an easement and record it.
Yes.
It's gonna have to be the meets and bounds for that, I agree, it's gonna be like a D description, so we, we can add those.
And you can put it in there, I think that's the way.
It'll be on the plan, it'll be a reference.
To the plan.
If there's any creeps, well, then we, there's a spot to go back to, is what I'm really interested in.
I love the thing with the original ones.
I think that, streams move, things move, yes. Yeah, but I think we should probably do them all at once.
Okay, and that's fine, so I appreciate, do you want to have any other-
Somebody's gonna say something.
Scott?
The county, uh, county letter.
Scott?
Hey, one second Mitch, we'll get to you, I'll get to you next, here, Michael's, that's all.
Re- referencing some of the, the points that you've made, and some of the waiver request, waiver requests already.
Okay.
Who's my county?
Make sure you look at that, I mean, you're just getting it right now.
Yeah, I'm looking at here, bog turtle, we did get a bog turtle resolution.
But the question, I guess the, the big one that is not, I don't see-
Chicken, chicken.
Comes down to it, and it is a real, a thing, and I think it would be an issue, which is number four in the, in the county's letter. Are your setbacks off by, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't feel that we have any.
The EZ just setbacks at thirty feet, mm-hmm.
I haven't noticed that, we do their problems, the building, building step back. Okay, we'll take a look at that, and zoning officer.
That's a zoning issue, we wouldn't be able to, yeah, that's a waiver anyway.
Yeah, right, we can't move.
Been through conditional use, so much of the, you know, this may be-
At some point, uh, um, I thought of interesting number ten, that this property is not on our map.
On the official map, yeah, I guess the-
Can we make changes to the official map? Didn't Char- didn't, no, Charlie Volk came in.
He did with the PRD, he had the, that's the official.
Yeah, but I wasn't on here.
Oh, not for this part, oh.
He didn't look here.
Okay, it was only for the PRD part.
Um, and the bog turtle thing, you, you got that.
It is, I need it.
And then the lighting, so we didn't talk about lighting, I think-
We're gonna give you a detailed lighting plan that will show the specifics, it will show the lighting levels, and again, I think, you know, all the use of it to go in here, uh, because we don't even have a parking lot, I mean, every parking lot that you're seeing, they have at least twenty, thirty lights. You know, where you actually can get under and you see up at them, these are gonna be, you know, this high, and just enough light, you know, most of them are interfacing, and enough light to make these access drive safe at night.
Because obviously, if you have a concerned community.
Yeah, like, we're still one of the centuries, one of the things you're trying to do.
Like, you know, already in this township, we've got, we've got areas where there's-
They're not necessarily the storage facilities, they're right next to storage facilities, they're, uh, over across them by Mark, those lights are-
Yeah, I agree, it's like-
That's in the, it's not a storage, uh, uh, camper van. Those are forty feet high.
Oh, yeah, leftover from the old dri- wasn't that a driving range before?
I don't know how that's allowed, I mean, we talked about enforcement over, there's no way that, but I don't even know if that's Smithfield, if that's down.
What are you talking about, I'm not sure.
Right across from Mark's bus.
Oh, yeah, um.
Those are blinding when you're driving down the road, Ken.
I wonder if they got leftover from the driving, I think they had late time driving, yeah.
It's, it's storage for, uh, camper vans.
Right, yeah.
That's water gap, though.
These water gap, they might not have that on yours.
Mitch never got a chance to do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mitch-
Alright, that's, that's it for me, thanks, thank you.
Mitch, what did you wanna say? Sorry about that.
I have, I have a question, um, relative to the municipal planning code. Does section three oh-three B apply to these types of actions and recommendations? And since you probably don't know what that says, it says, "The recommendation of the planning agency, including a specific statement as to whether or not the proposed action is in accordance with the objectives of the formally adopted comprehensive plan, shall be made in writing to the governing body within forty-five days."
He's referencing the powers and duties of a, of planning agency, I believe, now, I, I don't know, section three oh-three, or whatever he's saying, I'm not sure what that is. That's Mitch putting that section in again, because I, I made a copy for you, for all of you, of the township ordinance on planning, powers and duties.
That was you that said that.
And then I also gave you in addition to the township ordinance, the MPC section on powers and duties. And under the township ordinance, it basically says the planning commission, you have the powers and duties as per the MPC, and if you look at- shall have the powers and duties as per the MPC, and if you look at the MPC, there are basically two shells that you have to prepare a comprehensive plan and maintain and keep files of its actions, that's it. The other ones are all may at the request of the governing body, so I'm unsure what section we're talking about here with comprehensive plan.
Where's the other shell?
Three oh three B is the one that I'm referencing.
What section?
The licenses permit and similar charges, no?
No.
Three oh three B, that I don't know what section you're referencing.
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
It's in, it's in Article three. Three oh three B, I don't know if I can give you a page number or not, cause I'm looking at it electronically.
If you're talking about the comprehensive plan, uh, let me just look at that for a second here. Uh, okay.
Section three oh three deals with the legal status of the comprehensive plan within the jurisdiction.
Yes, you, you're dealing with the, the legal status of a comprehensive plan under the, uh.
The one I added in my iPhone, right?
And, uh, it basically says that whenever a governing body has adopted a comprehensive plan, uh, that, uh, planning agency, or, yeah, be submitted to the planning agency for its recommendation, uh. Yeah, I think that deals with dealing, when you're dealing with presenting the comprehensive plan to the planning agency, I, I don't know if it deals specifically with a general review. Yeah, it says here, the recommendation of the planning agency, that's that section B that you're talking about.
What says any subsequent proposed action of the governing body, its department, its agencies, need to be submitted, so. And my question is, does it apply to recommendations for approval of development plans, um?
My answer, it would be no, because you're under the comprehensive plan section. In other words, how the township or municipality would develop a comprehensive plan. And, did you, if you look at C, that's very telling, notwithstanding any other.
Absolutely, right.
No action by the governing body or municipality shall be invalid, nor shall the same ever be subject to challenger appeal on the basis that the action is inconsistent with, fails to comply with the provisions of a comprehensive plan. So as, uh, what we said, a comprehensive plan really doesn't have any deep nillies, uh.
Correct.
But in answering your question, my answer would be no, because you're under the comprehensive plan section. You, the planning commission, and I'm sorry you're not here, I tried to email these to you, but you have them from your seminar, uh, basically has the powers and duties of a planning agency, and there's two shells, and then there are fourteen, if the, if the supervisors say you can't. So that's really where I think your powers would go.
All right, so for this.
The answer's no, and I understand that.
At least that would be my answer, you might get another lawyer that would say something different. If everyone agreed with everyone else, including lawyers, I'd be out of work.
Yeah, well. I'm not even touching that.
I'm not either.
All right, so really, for this one, we need to table this to January thirteenth, which is our next meeting, the second Thursday. That sound about right?
For the, for the applicant, is there anything that's on these points, anyone thought would be, I can ask with their wack?
No, I don't think there's any, I, I don't think that it's a, I don't, I don't see anything that's a, that's an absolute no way, I mean, I see what they're doing with the stormwater, and, well, not for me, anyway.
Yeah, John doesn't cling to it, either.
I mean, it's.
I, I would say to you that, you know, you guys make your own decision, I don't mean to be shit about that, but if it's, if John is okay with whatever their requesting.
I forgot.
At least that's what I generally follow, even though I may, I got me telling something different, I have to say with my head, okay, I'll, I'll listen to what John says. But if John has a problem with something, then I would have to.
No, I want it all, I want, I like, I want it all in a nice usable form, so I'm gonna make a motion that we do table it to January thirteenth, so we can go, we go through, we can have, you know, we have, we, there's, there's plenty of other stuff, I mean, to read here as well. And we can come back, cause we have to reorganize that day anyway. So that'll be the first, that'll be our first meeting in the new year.
Hooray.
Hooray, so we can reorganize, but I'm gonna, but I make the motion that we do table it to January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at our next meeting, seven PM, uh, any seconds?
Seconds.
Okay.
Well, at that meeting, will you have a list of the variances?
Yeah, that's what I'd like. Yeah, so we can take. Yeah. Yeah, so that we can make our recommendations in motion form, the correct way for it, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, your letter of delivery is very good, man, it says what the section is, and then you're asking, and then you're showing how it's changing, and then you're showing your justification, which is important, I just, I like the waiver, cause I'm a nice gauze, you know, so, this format is very good.
Scott, you say you'd like a cover sheet with that, that maybe just has the.
Yeah, something that we can, yeah, so we, I mean, we've gone, we've gone through a lot of discussion here this evening. Yeah, summary sheet would be nice, cause it's. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff. Yeah, all right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, period, excellent, thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. All right, there's a couple of other items here on the, uh, new business, uh. Yeah, Merry Christmas, guys, all right. All right. I didn't get that in public comments, but Martha? If, if you can, I didn't, I was on there first, okay, go ahead, do you have anything you wanna add tonight? These weren't added the day of. All right, let's, let's move through these, cause I don't think we're gonna get through them, not just get through them, but I think, I'm gonna keep the A, B, and C here, we may wanna keep, keep on even for the January meeting as well.
That's the.
The shells, all the shells.
In our ordinance, it requires we print copies down every time.
We don't get to change anything.
I asked that, too.
We don't get to change, they have to supervise it to make it.
Maybe Michael doesn't know.
I, I have a copy of that.
Sure.
Cause there's a bunch of.
Can I, can I, I just, I, I asked about it every time, it's last time, too. I'm, I don't think anyone's gonna look at these, because they haven't been reviewed yet, so why would you look at it?
Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
Can I make a motion right now, or, or it's not part of this agenda?
Sure you can.
Cause we end this, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the board of supervisors, that we change whatever part of our ordinance that requires if they make copies of all the plans or submission of.
You're talking about review, and acceptance of review.
Acceptance of review of a land development plan, there should not be the need to make a copy of the, for every planning commission member, I'm sure they.
No need to make the large maps?
I mean.
It's open to, and we'll have.
Reality, I'm also not gonna read the storm water, water management report, I mean, either are you.
We usually don't, we usually don't get those.
I read them. I just, it's like, it's hurting me, doing all this to protect wetlands.
A lot.
I was saying, if there was malaria in this country, we wouldn't be protecting our wetlands if they don't.
A, a lot of planning commissions just would like to see eleven by seventeen, because they're much easier to handle.
There you go.
And.
I'm fine with that.
They, they can be printed a lot easier than.
They always come with the big.
With the big plans, so you, you may wanna recommend the ordinance be changed to submit fewer numbers of plans.
A single, a single large plan must be made available.
Right, and I need a single, although I'm perfectly fine usually an electronic copy with what, that's what the engineers send me.
That was obviously a horrible, I didn't even, I hadn't even finished my motion, but.
A single large plan?
That's, I, I don't even know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's not our ordinance saying that we have to do this, but I suspect it is.
Yeah, it must.
It must be, otherwise, why would you print that, cause that's, it's not cheap either. It's expensive to do.
Maybe what, like, one big reference copy?
It, well, you should have three big copies, uh, at least. You should have one, one for a file copy for the, for the township.
Okay.
I don't know whether Ken needs one or not, whoever is your administrator, and we should, even though I like electronics, we should be provided a large. Large copy.
And then, how about, but I like the eleven, eleven.
Then eleven by seventeen, however many you want, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I'd say twelve, just so you have them, because they're not that hard to print.
Eleven by seventeen.
Sure.
Well, he says a dozen, but that's whatever.
This is for the submission, we don't even, it hasn't even been reviewed yet, I, I wanna, I would, wouldn't mind seeing this at the next meeting, but they do, they print it again.
Well, they're so much easier to handle.
Cause, well, cause you're gonna have to make changes, but.
Hundred percent chance it's gonna be changed.
Should we keep them, they said, no, it's gonna be changed.
Well, that's my problem, so at the end, and when it's like close to the end, I don't mind, when it, but we can still share.
Well, I, I have your motion that this is only at the acceptance for review, this.
At the acceptance.
Not anything beyond that.
No, only the acceptance.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that's where you know the, that's where you know the changes will be, I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I, I think it's a splendid idea.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's fine with me, let's, let's mo- make a request to the supervisor.
By the way.
All right. Uh, Mitch, A is, uh, A is one, is one, uh, that you asked me to put on here for certain, for sure.
Sure.
That the planning commissioners, that the planning commission has supervisors to request the planning commission to develop, recommend for approval, and implement specific onboarding plans for new planning commission volunteers. All right. What are your thoughts, you had me put it on the agenda, so.
Well, I think, I think most of my thoughts I expressed, um, when I was talking about attending some of the, the training that I've done, um, and, you know, it's quite enlightening, and I've started a list of things that I think that, um, we as planning commission volunteers should be aware of, um, and understand and know pretty intimately. Um, but that's just my list, so I'm suggesting that as a, as a team, we put together what we think that should be. And we submit it to the.
And orientation, yeah.
And I touched upon that, Mr. Chair, in the planning commission meeting of November eighteen, where Mr. Bauer had made that comment about attending the planning institute, et cetera, so there is some, some reference.
Yeah, we had some discussion, I think.
Doesn't have to be, I, my one concern is that you mandate yourself to do something, then you have to do it, of course, cause then we're required by law to do it, right? Um, but it also doesn't have to be, it can be a constant work in progress, where it can initially start as the onboarding process is attending these three courses online, full stop, and it can slowly evolve and grow. I have no problem with it as a, as a action.
I'm actually, I'm, I'm I'm actually more interested in the, in, in making the motion that, being the, uh, that for planning commission members, and certainly new ones, to township, uh, pick up whatever the, the tuition costs for a couple of these seminars are, for new members to.
We already did that, uh, we already did an action the last week, last week, last month, where we asked the supervisors to include trainings in the budget for twenty twenty.
We did, but we did put it in a formal motion form, that's why I put it on the actual.
We did say it's a formal motion.
Did we?
As a request.
I have all the minutes, Mr. Chair.
I was just gonna look at them, I don't remember.
Motion by Commissioner Albert, and second, or Albert, and second by Commissioner Morris, and on a vote of seven zero, the tax or budget should contain a line item for Commissioner to attend workshops and.
Okay, then that did happen, all right. All right, all with me.
That's a, you know, may or may not have been addressed, I guess, but.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Well, I mean, I think then, what Mitch just looked for is some sort of formality of this is the orientation and includes attending these trainings.
Yeah, we should go to the, you should, this is a.
But this is a piece of paper, it tells you where to go, it says the.
Was there, is there all? Right, I think that's, yes.
Was they also thinking of like a handbook for new members, though?
Yeah. I don't know how we do a handbook for this, whatever this mess of, of, of.
Well, I'm not sure.
Of an egg beater we've been.
I think it can be, I honestly think, I like the idea, I think it could grow, and I think it could also have, it could start with a single page, here is the link to.
Here are these seminars, yes, ordinances.
You know, this is the link to the, you know, zoning, this is the link to, this is the area where you're gonna have, you know, you don't have any control over the zoning side of things, you don't bother, or, and, um, and here are some available trainings that are free, these are some available trainings.
That the task will pay for.
That the task will pay for, it can start as simple as that, and then it can grow.
What is the organization, it sounds like AFCA, but what is it?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they, they have a, they have a lot of, they provide a lot of seminars, they have webinars.
They have a handbook.
And they may have a handbook, yeah.
What is it, a Pennsylvania supervisors?
You can download Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, it's the, it's the.
We asked Julia to do that.
Certainly check, but, uh, representing Dangerboro, Upper Mount Bessel, and Borough Wing Gap, and none of them have any.
Yeah, I think.
None of them have any such property.
Yeah, I think you're blazing a new trail here, which is a good one, but.
Uh, maybe not, uh, I mean, maybe not quite new, I wouldn't be surprised with some other townships, I mean, there's also a bunch of other townships in this county.
Well, maybe we go to PSATS and ask them.
Well, I, I think, I, I think there's a lot.
Hang on, just hang on a second, what'd you say, Mitch?
Well, I think there's, I think there's a lot more to discuss than some outside organizations, uh, input as to what we, you know, would be good onboarding. Um, there's a whole bunch of things that I think that we should, we should get involved with and we should do, and, and the volunteers should be willing to read and to learn, and to spend some time outside of just attending the planning commission meetings. I mean, it's the only way that I'm even beginning to understand what our responsibilities are. And in that one little training course, there were like eighteen responsibilities of the planning commission.
Our supervisors don't know they're all.
That's true.
No, I mean, and have you ever been to this, the meeting with all the supervisors come together, it's ridiculous. I mean, I'm, no, no offense, but that, it's, but maybe, at the same time, maybe the planning commission, if they're more knowledgeable with the supervisors, and supervisors are changing cause they're elected, maybe that's a good thing. If the planning commission starts really telling supervisors. I mean, it's been recorded. I'm not playing for the supervisors, I actually don't even mean this township, I mean other townships, some counties.
Could we ask Julia to maybe look into this a little bit for us, and see what she can find?
Julia should be able to get the, get the handbook.
Yeah, I mean, find out what PSAT, Mitch is not, this is nothing new, yeah, it'd be a good start.
Check out the roadmap.
And a recommendation of, uh, you know, what seminars they may have, or webinars they may have online.
Right, and by the way, another good resource is, is Eric at, uh, the Monroe County.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Can I, can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
Um, that the planning commission asks the supervisors to request the planning commission to develop, recommend for approval, and then implement specific onboarding plan for new planning commission volunteers with the assistance of Julia.
And, and.
And.
Whoever, whosoever can be of assistance at the MCPC, for example, Eric.
And the MCPC. MCPC.
Okay.
One more.
I'll second that.
Could you repeat that, please?
It's your, it's your exact writing for the motion, plus I added with assistance from Julia. And the MCPC.
And the Monroe County Planning Commission.
In other words, the supervisors are authorizing this and then saying that she can assist us with this. She's tasking her, they're tasking her with assisting us in this matter, which I think will ensure that it happens.
Excellent idea.
Okay.
Please, efficient.
Like I said, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Allocate appropriate funds, review, update devices, recommend approval of comprehensive plan. All right. Looking actually, the, uh. The State Supervisor Association has, has a number of, has a number of seminar products, that's easy enough to deal with. Yeah. That's right. All right. Uh, comprehensive plan, Mitch.
Yep.
All right.
It's twenty years old, it needs to be updated. How, how many, how many of you have read the comprehensive plan in the last three to five years?
I have.
I mean, it's really, it's really enlightening, and I'm, I'm not even through the whole thing yet, but it talks about a lot of the things that we've raised as concerns in terms of how we, how we approve developments within the township. And all the data and the survey that was done of the residents was done twenty years ago, so I, you know, anything that old needs to be updated.
But I think my concern, and maybe the concern of others, is it's a document that has no.
Has no teeth.
No teeth, no legal bearing, and the challenge, that doesn't mean you shouldn't have a vision, but it's not without a lot of work, and it's not without money. You want to do that, you want to, so the question is, do you want to spend a lot of money for something that, that doesn't, that sits on a shelf and doesn't do anything? I agree with you, Mitch, there should be a guiding plan, and it, it should be there, um, but if it doesn't have any teeth, and you don't, there's no legal reason to have to use it, as soon as this group that has used it, uh, is gone and rotates off, then no one will ever look at it again. I just, I'm not in favor of spending a lot of time and money for something that's not going to do anything.
Correct. I'm in favor of making the request for money for C.
Uh, we're not there yet.
But that's it.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
Let me just, let me just, let me just add, add to that, Michael, and we're in hearty agreement with Michael. Basically by saying, why, you know, if we haven't been looking at a, call it a, a comprehensive plan, lowercase, in the last ten years, what have we been doing? We basically have re refurbished the entire map of this township, or a goodly part of it.
Yeah, that's true.
At least the commercial corridors.
I mean, that was, that was.
That was the comprehensive, yeah, essentially what we did was craft, from the inside out, if you will, the comprehensive plan. But, but we had, also, we had the benefit of having gone through Gateway, having gone through, uh, the process of, of looking at the, having had a census.
To override.
A recent census, by the way.
That's true.
And some other things, so, so that the profile, we've seen how the profile of the town has changed in twenty years, certainly. And so, effectively, I agree with Mitch, that that thing called the comprehensive plan is obsolete.
Where, where would I find a copy of that to, to know whether I.
It should be online.
It's on the website?
Julia, Julia can send it to you, she sent it to me, or I have one printed, so you can get it printed there.
I just think before I can comment on this, I probably should take a look at it.
Well, gentlemen, just, just a comment from a new guy and an outsider here. Um, when you read through the comprehensive plan, and you look at the priorities that it set for maintaining the rural character of our township, for managing and controlling signage, for maintaining the topography of the way the, the land flows, and the views, and that sort of thing. A lot of the things that are being done, to Doug's point, in the past ten years, are diametrically opposed to that. In spite of the fact that there was a survey of the residents that we serve done, and that is basically what the survey said, and what a pretty, I think, impressive committee put together is this should be the guiding, the guidance for the township. Why the hell haven't we been using it?
Because it's twenty years old.
You were.
That's not the same, I mean, the answer to that question is because, hold on, Mitch, hold on. It's twenty years old, so you cannot say that the people around today believe the same thing that came out of that survey. There's no reason to, to think that that's the case.
I think you, Mitch, you should know that one of the reasons that it's not followed, and it's done in, in many areas, is that Pennsylvania law is such that if a person files a plan that meets with the township's ordinances, plan must given approval. The township cannot say, we don't like this idea, we don't like what's happening, we don't like where it is, we don't like what it's doing. If it complies with the ordinances that the township has in place, it must be given approval. So, doesn't matter what the comprehensive plan says, if they want to come in and put in, you know, uh.
Whatever.
Ten carnivals on a little piece of property, and it's okay with our ordinances, we got to approve it, and that's the problem.
Well, the other thing is.
Until such time as the legislature changes that law, that's the problem. We have to give it approval.
Well, there were ordinances recommended in the comprehensive plan, I don't know if they were ever approved and adopted.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Well, there, there's one more thing to add to that, too. What governs our approval process is both our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance. Those basically have been driven by case law ever since the MPC was enacted back in nineteen seventy-two. So, we could develop a comprehensive plan and say, we want to, we want to keep seventy-five percent of all parcels of land in their natural state, because we want to keep our township natural. That, that will get shot down with the first developer that comes in to file a plan.
It's unconstitutional.
Right.
The third, the third case, S U R R I C K, the fair share case, if you will.
Well, I, I would suggest that maybe we table this until everybody has a chance to take a look at the comprehensive plan and read section three of the Municipal Planning Code, which deals with whatever the legal requirements might be.
Okay, let's move on.
Next, last.
Tech to last. To consider. A motion for the, uh, periodic report, I, I put in periodic report, I think you sent it to me, monthly?
Monthly, absolutely.
I'd say, I'll say periodic, I don't care so much necessarily monthly, because we're not going to have time to look at it anyway, I think it's, I think quarterly is, is probably good to see where they're at.
I don't even move them.
Okay. But I'm just saying, um, building officer, building inspector, permits applied for, oh, great, it's granted, sorry. Or refused in any violations cited in the legal status of a zoning violation. You know, we don't need to know names, obviously, you know, until, until they're in court. And then, and then, and then they are, and then they are public. But I think really what, the, the goal of this, of this particular motion is to.
Sort of, sort of, request some systemization of what is really a sort of haphazard and, and ad hoc, uh, you know, in, in enforcement, and I'll say statistical, probably, whatever, you know, permits and whatnot that have come in. Um, most of that, most of that, uh, motion in C is mostly an Excel spreadsheet, to be perfectly blunt.
I can tell you that in Earl Rosetta, where I'm solicitor.
Yes.
Earl Wing Gap, where I'm solicitor, Township Upper Mount Bethel, where I'm solicitor, they have a monthly report from the zoning officers saying, how many permits have been refused.
Then, then, you know.
Now, didn't we, didn't we?
When I sent that to Robert, he seemed to think that was.
He seemed to think it was a good idea, but I put it on, we put it on here to make it a, to make it a formal motion, because we've.
It came up already.
Okay.
And that.
How did they do it, Ron?
When you use that on a month. Like a rule, Excel spreadsheet. These permits have issued for, one for the swimming pool, one for a shed, one for this.
Oh, but he's got a Excel sheet.
Have been issued, but not many names, just basically.
Yeah, right, without names.
Telling you what has been done in the last month.
Or what was denied.
This is a report I prepare every month, that I list what I have done for the township in the last month.
Okay.
And you can do a court briefing, and those, all those places, they do it.
Yeah, and it's the dirty word, it's the dirty A word, accountability. All it does is.
Or let's make a motion.
And they do it monthly, but you guys can do it as well.
No, I'm, I'm okay, they could do it monthly, that's, hang on a second, Dave. They could, they could do it. The, the reason you want to avoid the names for anything other than that, before anything goes, it becomes public in the courts, you don't want to end up with a, with acts of official oppression of it to be.
No, I mean, I mean, some of permits that have been approved, that's public information, but not.
That could be public, whatever's public.
Yeah, but you don't necessarily need it for your things, unless you want to know that Mr. Smith get a pool permit. For me, if I were just saying, just tell me how many pool permits there are, I don't care who's got them right now. If I want to find out, I'll ask the zoning officer, that's.
I'll make a motion of this, though, that we, that we request. So we make a motion that, that the planning commission be provided with, uh, we'll say a monthly.
Monthly, mm-hmm. And every meeting be a standing agenda.
Yeah, well, I'll keep it, oh, yeah, we'll keep it as a standing agenda, yeah. Uh, a mon, a monthly request of permit enforcement and legal actions that are, uh, public record.
Permit, wait, permit enforcement, you mean?
Permits, comma, enforcement actions, and litigation that is a public record. Provided to the planning commission.
From the zoning officer and the building inspector, yes?
For the same guy.
Well, building. Do you have, uh, what?
No, Tino is, is a building inspector.
Oh, okay.
Those are building permits.
Really? Do we have those?
Yeah.
Shit, I should try, I should think about that once in a while.
Second.
All right, yeah, let's do that, Ron. Whatever it is, if you could provide some guidance, Ron, as to how, as to how those boroughs do it, that would be terrific.
I, I think you'd probably give you just a, a copy of what.
Sure, that'd be great.
That you used last night from Borough Rosetta, you know.
That'd be great, that's, that's really the kind of thing that.
Okay, so maybe you could share that with, if this gets approved by the supervisors.
Yeah.
It can be shared with.
Absolutely. Julia and Ken?
Yeah, so they, they're not reinventing the wheel, because I don't want to give them extra, a bunch of wood.
No, right, I don't want to, right, I agree, I think that's a good idea.
And Mr. Moore is right on target about the public record stuff, because under the Right to Know Act, violations, et cetera, are not really public record unless there has been a suspension or revocation of a permit.
Yes.
A violation investigation, or enforcement, that's not called.
No, we don't need to know that.
And I get that from those other places.
Correct, right.
Permits, who's doing what.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Perfect.
Perfect.
That a motion?
That is a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, make a motion, we adjourn.
Wait.
Not yet, you know.
I just want to highlight to Mitch, or to the group, one thing, on this, because we quickly went off the coverage plan. The other thing to keep in mind is, is there are other plans aside from this township at a county and regional level? And all the townships, this has been my complaint from number one, is are always acting in isolation, and like we live in an island, and it doesn't work that way, especially when you're talking with developers, uh, you're talking about the economy, the economy doesn't change when you cross from Smithfield to Middle Smithfield. Uh, so, if there's any future talk of comprehensive plan, the idea of doing any sort of survey, or any sort of, spending any money whatsoever on doing any sort of strategic planning, I really genuinely believe you cannot do it at the township level, you're gonna have to do it by going to more townships. And actually, you're gonna do it more effectively that way, too, because you can pool your resources.
Have you seen the County Council as a plan?
Yes, I've read that as well.
Okay, and that's more recent.
That's, they, they redid that one four years.
Twenty eleven?
Yeah.
Oh, what, longer than that.
And, and, and you're right on target there, goes in, in the slate belt, where there are ten municipalities. They are now in the process of have been working on a multi municipal, multi municipal comprehensive plan.
I, I personally think we should have all the same ordinance, but you don't want to give.
Well, comprehensive plan is not an order, but.
I know, I, I actually think it's, it's. So part of it, exactly what you're.
And that's exactly why.
You can still have unique townships and have shared ordinance plans that have little tweaks to them.
Mitch, have you seen the County Comprehensive Plan?
Am I what?
In the county comprehensive plan?
No, but it's, it's referenced in the, uh, the plan that I have looked at. I mean, these things are a hundred and some pages long, so you don't read three or four of them.
But a county plan isn't so.
Yeah, it's big, but they printed that one, you can get one of those at the MPC.
But that's, that's part of the job of going through and figuring out what, what our vision is. And I'm really struggling with what is our vision for the township. And Scott, I have one more item to add before you adjourn. Um, last meeting, uh, David Strunk recommended that we keep track of old business and items that, so that we don't lose track of them. One of the, the motions last week was to have a budget item added, um, to the township budget. And I think we should put that on that list until we get feedback from the, the supervisors and, and get an answer to that.
For, uh, uh, request a budget item for, for the seminar training, or what?
No, for the, for the, uh, the training of new members.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the seminar training.
But, but the point, what Mitch is saying, I think, is we should keep tabs on that, what is the status of it?
And you should know that, although I have that in the minutes, I don't know if the supervisors look at that. So what I'm putting notes here as I'm talking, that I've got two motions, I'm gonna do in a separate notice to the supervisor.
Okay, yeah.
So what you guys did, and then I'll add that one from last month.
Yeah.
If they are not reading the minutes, they're not gonna know.
What's the status of that?
I'm gonna be in here, so I'm not gonna read the minute.
No, but the point, the point from my side and David's side is that there should be an old business item, where there's a list of these things kept until they are resolved and answered.
I'd also like to know how the supervisors rule on projects when they, do they take our recommendations, or they, are they required to?
They're pretty good about that, they do take our recommendations.
They use us as a advisory board.
Yeah, so I mean, they don't act, but, yeah, it'd be nice to.
It'd be nice to have feedback, like, oh, we didn't take this recommendation that you made because of this, and we added this one because of that. We don't, we're getting no feedback on what we're doing. Are we just sitting here?
Well, what's our mechanism, I mean, this is, Ron, what is our mechanism when we make a motion, any recommendation that's not necessarily on a plan? Or if it is on a plan, I assume it's because it's required by law for them to act on it, so then they get our recommendation.
I have just been putting it in, in minutes, mine and minutes are pretty thorough, as you may.
Oh, yeah.
Know as you read them, and I'm hoping they read them, but now thinking about it, maybe they don't. So maybe after, at the end of each meeting, I just do a simple email saying, at the meeting of planning commissions, these were the motions made, one, two, three.
These were recommendations made.
Right, recommendations made, et cetera.
Right.
These are on an upcoming meeting agenda, et cetera.
If you would, I can email them to me, and then I can make sure that they get back in under the, old, under the old business.
Once I get my server not being kicked back for Gmail.
I know what to have.
Because I have five other people that same thing happened to.
That's weird.
Something happened with my server that Gmail is saying, wait a minute, there's a security.
It has to be, yeah, because that was weird.
Wrong.
Okay.
Where I have four other people.
All right, so then let's do that, then, but if you, or whichever, that way it comes back around, and then that does take care of, as I point up to Mitch.
Do they, do they have PTD accounts recipients?
I have no idea.
PTD recently, like.
Yeah.
When you say that, I don't know. PTD went and did, I, nobody said with a PTD account, get my Gmail emails anymore, so I had to go in and.
Yeah.
And also, P T D puts it in massive fire ring wall protection.
Notice that it's back, if your, your message will not be served, or is, hey, guys, and we're not gonna react to it.
Well, not yet. Garth said she, she put her hand up here.
Your passes is. No.
I do the notes, Martha, I can't answer that question. My notes don't say there was an motion made. That Mr. Strong said, "Until we get straight, whether or not this is a violation of the settlement, we're not gonna take any action." That was my fault, you know. Hey, I don't, is that in my minutes, or?
I don't know, I don't know, come on, you know.
We're on minutes.
No, no, it's okay, forget it.
If you say there was a vote, it would be a social action, mine has itself worked that.
I don't remember.
I know we didn't, I, I think what it was meant was there was no action taken on a recommendation of a plan. Hey, it was, no, it was not, like, I.
I don't remember that. I remember they said, "Until we address whether or not there's violations, we're not gonna make any recommendations."
Okay.
We didn't recommend.
We're fired, then.
Good. No, I'm sorry. Go back and watch the Zoom.
I don't recall the exact, but I, I do seem to recall that that somebody said, maybe you, Scott, that was, until things were determined, or that there was legal evaluation.
Well, maybe that, that does sound familiar, but on the condition that they're in legal, they're, they're not in violation with the.
I, I don't remember at all, Martha, one way or the other.
I'm also not sure it makes a whole lot of difference, because there's gonna be the litigation of regarding that anyway, to be, to be perfectly blunt. It's gonna go back to court, if you think there's a violation of how the settlement arrangement.
Motion, tell the issue of the S P S settlement to be satisfied.
That's a settlement. Condition on the issue of the S P S settlement.
I, I.
Factually addressed.
I, I do remember that there was a motion to table, and Ron said, "No, you don't have enough time."
Ah.
Because it's a conditional use. Go back.
Okay.
And does it go before the others? They have the whole, the conditional.
Well, conditional use hearings have.
They have the only conditional use hearing, but he didn't say M P until just recently, so the sixty days is still pretty much out there a little bit, I think. I had to double check when.
It's not ninety days from the.
Oh, that's for a subdivision, but this is conditional use.
From when he filed the application, not for this meeting.
What we, what we voted on was that the S P S supervisors were hearing. Because it was, that's what the whole point was, was to, us to evaluate it and hear it. In effect, approve it, condition on the hearing.
Here, well, you go, I, I don't remember.
It's not conditional hearing, it was conditional on, um.
Basically.
Watch it, you'll see that.
Yeah, have you?
Oh, no, it's, you know, it's in here. At the motion made, recommend approval of the two thousand twenty-one amendments on condition that there is compliance with P and D requirements in transfer review letter, all through the blah blah blah, this was seconded, thereupon a motion to amend is made by, to include a condition of no violations of the existing settlement. Second.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have a vote on that. I had that motion.
I remember making a motion, I don't remember.
I remember a motion, I don't remember a second or a vote on it. But I do have the motion. There's, motion to amend was made by commissioners to include a condition of no violations.
All right, how do we get beyond this? Can we, somebody go back and watch, watch the tape?
You can't hold a hearing. Supervisors didn't hold a hearing, yeah.
But whatever action you take.
Well, it is reflected that we agreed that.
It's all properly reflected, I just don't have a vote.
If the S P S, that, I mean, it is agreed without saying vote, that issue of the S P S settlement agreement must be satisfactorily addressed, which is, in some ways, the same thing. In fact, not having a vote means that's come back to us, or that can happen.
You made the motion, and the second, then you took the.
But if it can't legally come back to us because the conditional use is needed, then.
Public comment, but then it was never a vote.
I, I'll, I'll volunteer to go back and watch the Zoom.
I'm gonna watch it, too.
And, uh, make, make a correction to the minutes as, as needed.
Right.
What?
You can always make a modification.
Yeah, we can make a modification to the minutes of the next meeting, okay?
Get it on YouTube.
Yeah, let's confirm, because if there was a vote, they should be there.
Arthur, you find him on YouTube?
He's on YouTube.
You're out of Jerry Springer.
I watch the supervises.
Okay. Martha, you wanna come back on the commission?
Second.
Female representation.
Yes.
Second.
I know. I, I, I'm not that old, I'm just saying that seems like an audience.
All right, we're Jared.
Young men, too.
I made a motion.
More than a motion, driver second.
Okay, close enough, please.
That's close enough.
Have a good evening, guys.
Take care, Mitch.
Thank you, Martha.
You're looking at me, you're looking at Ron.